Call to order, Paintsville City Council Regular Meeting Monday, February 10th, 2020, 6:00 PM, Paintsville Recreation Center. Would you please sign the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call and roll, please.
David.
Here.
Sarah Boeckel.
Both.
Preston.
Sarah Kim.
Preston.
Here.
Rick.
Here.
I got just a couple of announcements. Our final public steering committee meeting, Ms. Regina, is February the 24th at 6:00 PM at the Country Highway Museum, and that's when the final plan, as far as us moving forward, will be submitted. Is that correct?
Yeah, it'll be presented to the public for their review.
Okay.
That's for the floodplain?
No. No, this is for the...
Community strategic plan.
Yes.
Oh, okay. That's something easy. I didn't have enough time.
Also, Carter Lane, Ms. Kim, I think that we put that bid together to go in Wednesday's paper in the Paintsville Herald, is that correct?
Yes, I think it's correct. Yeah, and that is for demolition of the houses, the riprap ditch construction, and basic types of tables, I just make off on that.
So, we're finally moving on that. Your sidewalk project, according to Joe Jacobs, that money is still in holding. So, we'll just have to keep waiting on that. And that's all the announcements I have. If I can have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, 11320.
I make a motion to approve the minutes. Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Opposed. Approval of department reports.
I'll make that motion that we approve departmental reports.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Approval of paid bills as presented.
I'm with we pay bills as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Moving on to business, resolution to designate myself as applicant agent for the Paintsville Utilities Generator Project. Ms. Regina, if you want to explain that to them, please.
Sure. So, we're submitting a hazard mitigation grant program application for a generator to be placed at the Paintsville wastewater treatment plant on Island Creek Road and one at the pumping station over on Depot. And there's going to be two steps to this. One, we have to do a resolution to make the mayor the applicant agent for this project only. Right, Kim?
Yes.
Well, just this project. You already have an applicant agent, but he will just... That means that basically, that means he's going to sign all the paperwork for all... For the grants going forward.
I so move that we give Mayor Runyon the authority to sign all papers regarding the generator for this project.
Well, I think first, if you don't mind...
No, I don't mind. I just hope that...
First, just go ahead and approve this resolution. If you don't mind.
The next one's...
And then the next one would be to have him sign all future documents.
I see.
It's just something they're making us do.
Well, I move that we do the resolution for the generator project.
Yes.
Okay. And you already said it, right?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
And then just to be clear, for housekeeping purposes, just go ahead and make a motion that you all let him sign all the paperwork instead of moving forward.
My move, I ask that we let Mayor Runyon sign all the paperwork pertaining to this generator project.
I second.
Going forward.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And before they leave, they all need to sign that document, correct?
Yes. And then she will have to... You can't sign it because we're making you the African agent, so Robin will sign it.
Yeah, it's got her name at the bottom of the line, doesn't it? But it doesn't have mine.
Yes.
Item number three.
Public control.
Resolution approving and authorizing an assistance agreement with the Kentucky Rural Water Finance Corporation to refinance and currently refund certain obligations of the city. Mr. Pack.
Yes.
That would be your...
Is that a lower interest rate on it? Are you going to get a lower interest rate on it?
This loan was originally with the Department of the Army regarding the water in Paintsville Lake. It was 30 years, four and an eighth percent. Five years ago, we chose to go ahead and refinance that short term. We did five years with a 25-year amortization, saving that same 30 years, which means you have balloon payment coming up. But that payment is just under 2% for five years. We saved over $300, right after $8,000 in interest in time years. Also, we're able to pay a little half a million dollars extra principal on that payment down. So, we're looking to refinance $3.27 billion and change for 20 years, same against the original 30-year loan. Now, this will be bonds, so it'll be bid out. Projection is about 2.7%.
That's still a good deal.
Yes, and I'd be glad to vote this opinion if you'd like, but I've got it scheduled out here. And over the 30-year period, by doing the... We plan to refinance it twice. We're going to save right just under a million dollars of interest. It could be more than that if the rates are a little lower expectation, lower than what's at. Let's go ahead and ask for any other questions on it.
It's all about saving funds.
And this does appear to be the time to go back to long-term. Long-term rates are near or at historic lows, so we're looking to lock in.
I make a motion we approve the resolution lowering the debt, I would say, or... Give you to refinance. To refinance the loan.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also, last meeting, we have to add something to the agenda. I guess I am allowed to open me.
You're the boss.
All right. Anyway, as you know, we pay some of Ms. Regina's salary to be the grant writer for Paintsville and Johnson County. So, for some reason, this... The document we voted on was sent to the AG, and it was supposed to went to the Department of Local Government. And there were just a few minor changes they wanted changed on that, such as exactly when she was hired, so on and so forth. So, I guess what we have to do is vote on it again to have Ms. Regina be our...
Decide a local agreement in terms of the employment.
Be our grant writer. So, we have to vote on it again, since it was...
You just need a motion to...
Yeah, we just need a motion to second it.
Make her grant writer. Accept interlocal agreement.
To accept the interlocal agreement between fiscal court and Paintsville City Council.
I move that we accept Regina as our grant writer for the local government and by body and by all the new rules that they set forth in that...
Interlocal agreement.
In local.
Interlocal agreement.
Interlocal agreement.
Mr. Preston, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. All right, moving right along. We'll open it up to council. Council got anything?
When... Did you get a date for the floodplain meeting yet, people?
No, we haven't. We're hoping it's going to be pretty quick.
Who keeps this up? I do too.
You're right on track.
I'm going to reserve anything I would have said, but it's going to be... It's been going on a long time, hasn't it?
It has been going on a long time.
So, I mean...
It started back in June, then it went to October, then it went to January.
They're still within their... They're staying on their projected timeline within a couple of months.
Well, they say that. I know they say... Because it has to be done by, what, '22? And that's when the monies have to be expended?
Has to be done by '24.
'24, yes.
'24.
It has to be completed by January of 2024.
Well, I think it's '22. I've been lying to people.
What are they expecting, the timeline to do the project? Two years?
Two.
They're going to get it pretty quick.
Probably two and a half.
They're going to get it on pretty quick.
See, somebody had told me originally that when they gave the money in 2002 for 20 years, and like somebody said, "But we had to find it and use it before then." It was hidden for some reason.
Well, actually...
So, that's all it was. We had to... It just had to be used by then.
Yeah, actually, it came from what was called a 202 fund, didn't it, Regina?
Yes.
And when it comes from that particular fund, then you've only got five years to complete a project. And sometimes they give an extension to make it six, but it's in that time period it has to be completed, because it came from that particular fund.
Right. But it's... But they're... But you think it'll be soon? Soon or...
Yes, I do. I think it'll be soon.
Okay.
Any other things from council?
Yeah, we've got a department that we all are aware of. It's losing some money, which I would say is the fire, rescue, and ambulance service. Well, the mayor's been working on this for a while and doing a very good job. And what I want to request is Mr. Rick Ratliff and Mr. Gary McClure, you all can get together and come up with some ideas to help on what the problem is with these monies that we're losing. And if also, we might be able to get some input from the employees and put this on paper to us and let's look at it before we have to do something we don't want to do.
So, you want them to come up with, put on paper some type of cost cutting?
Sure, yeah. Some ideas or a way to make it happen. Would you agree, sir?
I guess I would agree.
David?
You're exactly right.
Yep. And if you can, have that to our next meeting. Yeah, that'd be great.
So, Rick, we're talking about 911 and fire and rescue?
And ambulance. All the way down to payroll. You know, those are such essential services, you know?
Yeah.
They're all essential services, and we need them desperately, but we need them at the best cost we can get them for the tax for our money. I agree. I think we need to look at it.
911's been a giant hole ever since I've been here. I mean, a lot longer than me, and the county's going to have to help us at some point.
I personally think 911 can be fixed.
It can.
I'm sure it can.
Well, we just got to get some cooperation.
It's going to take a big, hard look at payroll there, too.
I think so too, Sarah. I do, and I think we can fix it, and I think we can do it.
I think together we could. We all work together.
911, we could all roll into the meeting, put the date, bring it up, and let them tell us. Anyone else not going to help us, would work with us?
I don't know if there'll be much cooperation there, but...
Well, at least about 65% of the calls come from outside the city. Is that not correct? 911?
That would be close.
So, I mean, you know, and...
I mean, we'd have to do some research on that.
And the taxpaying citizens of Paintsville's paying 100% of that. Because you lost a lot of revenue. You lose landlines, nobody... I mean, I know some people still do, but a lot of people don't. You lost that. You gotta have 911, and I'm not... I'm not making any suggestions of that.
I don't want that close movement.
But I mean, we just need a little bit of cooperation between the government and...
Well, Bill Mark...
Make help of some on those costs.
Well, the mayor suggested that we, you know, get together in groups, twos and threes, and I'm ready. Anytime you all, I'm ready. I don't have any surrogates.
I'm ready. Just call me.
But I mean, really and truly, that's nothing aside, we all ought to get together, maybe in twos, and talk to each one of them with the mayor present, and talk about some of these things, because I've got some suggestions.
Have you?
And I know you all do too.
Have you had any thing back from county judge or anything? I know...
Oh, yeah. We've had...
And Gary, okay. I was going to figure Mark was...
We've had two meetings.
Two meetings. I think you'll work with it. I'll tell you, he's doing... But my point being, you all got more of an inside look at what's going on, and you can talk to some of those employees. They may know something that you all don't, and if you just get it on paper, get it to us, where we can just look at it. That's all I'm asking. Very simple. We discussed this once, the cell phone. Who do we go to get that changed or try to help? Since all the landlines are gone?
You go to your state legislature.
They'll patch up on that.
And your senator.
Okay.
There's been several times it's come up on the floor for them to... I may be wrong when I say this, but I think 70 cents is what you pay on your cell phone right now?
Yes.
I know the landline's a dollar seventy-three.
Correct.
And the cell phone is 70 cents.
Yes. Do they go by your home address you give them when you get a cell phone? See, I wonder how they know where to give you that.
I don't think they do.
911's the... Out of it. Is it gone by your address, Regina? Okay. That'd be going with... We give a list, and Robin grows up the city, all give me an updated list today, and I mean, Robin's like the list of this many phone carriers. Okay. And some of them might just be two. I'm talking landlines, okay? Naturally, the majority is footyels and then AT&amp;T. But there's a lot of, you know, a lot of people still got Southern Lake, you know, following force over out the, you know, and we get the landline charge from that, okay? Now, two years ago... Correct me if I'm wrong, Kim. The legislature changed some of the percentages that we get back on cell phones, okay? We get a percentage of that money back.
Cut into our 911 fund.
Every quarter, we get about, what, 35?
Yeah, 35.
Around 35,000 every quarter, okay? Well, actually, we take in more revenue from cell phones now than we do landlines. Okay? If we weren't getting that state money back on cell phones, we'd be dead in the water. Seriously, you know? That's where the majority of our revenue comes from. And at the same time, we have to remember, they also take a percentage of that 70 cents, and they put it back for grant money, okay? Regina, over the past five years, we've received about $350,000 in grant money from the state.
Used for equipment upgrades.
For equipment upgrades, okay? We had to upgrade the phone, we had to upgrade the radios, we had to upgrade the CAD, had to upgrade the recording system. So, you know, we're getting that quarterly money back, plus we had $350,000 in four or five years in grant money. And you all know, the way technology is, if we can't keep up with the technology, we're dead in the water now, okay? So, I mean, sure, we can do more money from the state, but at the same time, you know, it's helping us to survive right now.
I agree, but here's the thing about the grant money. They can give you all the grant money they want to for all the equipment they want to, but if you can't pay for people demanding, what good does it do you?
Yeah, well, yeah, that's true.
That's true.
I mean, that's the elephant in the room. That's the bottom line.
It's not that they are still paying the people.
So...
They're still getting paid. I mean, we're losing like a...
They do.
Yeah, and we're losing like 100,000 a year, and I know counties can't put in 100,000. We've got to look at ways to make that better. I mean, we have to think about it. We really have to think.
So, right here, right here is basically what we're looking at. We need to find alternatives along the fiscal code to fund our 911 system, correct?
Right.
And we need to take a strong look at, and let's just everybody admit it, we need to take a strong look at overtime in the ambulance service.
Yep, no question.
Amen.
That's what... I agree.
So, is that what everybody's agreeing to?
Pretty much. I agree.
Okay.
Well, I truly think it needs to be a close look, and I talked to you about this, at the amount of overtime that's being paid out in every department every year, and, you know, and it's substantial.
Yes.
So, what that tells me, at some point, there has to be a place and time where you could add other FTEs or full-time employees, you know, and not work the existing employees we have so much and so long. Now, they may not like that because of the money, and I understand that's why.
They're getting more and more.
But at the same time, you know, we need to look at those things that...
And I know that sometimes they need overtime.
Oh, I agree.
But not at that rate.
Right as well.
You're on your feet.
Are we good?
Ready.
All right, I'll open it up to the floor.
I have something to do. So, I'm Reagan. I work with local newspaper, and I'm also the secretary of the Johnson Paintsville Garden Club, and I'm also the secretary of the Appalachian Makers Club through the extension office. I'm a graduate student at NC Willstun College, and I'm sitting counseling community development. I'm a mother of two, and I'm a really good mom, and I'm a really good employee, and I'm a good student, and I'm also a recovering addict. And so, I come here today, you know, wearing... I have many hats that I wear, but today I'm wearing my student hat and my, you know, recovering addict member of the community hat. I was encouraged by a professor to write advocacy letter advocating for the substance abuse community, and I think that one of the themes at the community listening sessions that we've been having over the last few months has been, what can we do about our substance abuse problem, and what can we do about it for free, most importantly? And one of the things that I think that we could do would be to allow Narcotics Anonymous meetings to be held here at the Recreation Center. Public transportation is a big issue for a lot of people in Paintsville. We don't have it, so the two meetings that we do have every week are located on Star Fire Hill at Mountain Cop, and, you know, it's really not accessible for a lot of people. Furthermore, it's an extremely small room. The room's probably as big as these three tables put together the last meeting, second class meeting, you know, it took 28 people crammed into this room. We were sitting on the floor with each other, literally on top of each other to have this meeting. If you want to pass those around, that's a copy of the letter I wrote. Initially, I wrote it to Bill Mark, but we've hired someone new to paper, so I got to come here today, not as a journalist, but as a community member. So, there's a copy there of the letter, and also a copy of local meetings that we do have. And you'll see, if you look at that, that there are several, several meetings each week in Christiansburg, in Allen, and also in Pikeville, but Paintsville only has two. There's one on Sunday, and there's one on Monday at the Buckton Mountain Cop. The research shows that people who attend 12-step programs like Narcotics Anonymous are more likely to remain clean for multiple years. And it also shows that people who attend these meetings at least two to three times a week are the ones who remain completely abstinent. And Narcotics Anonymous is a total abstinence program. We don't take weekends off, you know? It's a total abstinence program.
Totally true.
There are lots of different people that you see in these rooms, you know? It's not just the stigma of the drug addicts. There's a lot of people that, like me, you know, come from good families and are contributing members of society. There's a lot of people there in suits and ties. A lot of these people are your friends, a lot of these people are your families. So, if you want to make a change, if you want to do something about substance abuse problem, I think it starts with making things like this more available for the community. We also pay rent when we need to, and we abide by rules. For example, we pick our cigarette butts up, we don't leave a mess, you know, we do all the things that we're asked to do just to be able to have these meetings at locations. It's been a challenge to get local churches or anyone on board, so I think at this point, you know, it is sort of something that's up to the city to address.
What kind of need want these meetings?
I would be willing to discuss that sometimes we have meetings at noon, sometimes we have them in the evening, whatever would work best for you all. I think it's just important to make these meetings more accessible to the community and have more of them. There are tons in Christiansburg, and not everybody can make that drive every day. I participated recently in the Kentucky Housing Corporation's K-Count, sort of like a census for homeless people. We walked around town and surveyed the homeless people in town. We counted over 10 the day that I went out. We weren't the only people counting, and I'll tell you right now that based on those survey questions we asked, there is an absolute obvious connection between addiction and the number of homeless people that we observe in the community. So, if we want to address that issue as well, this is another way to do that, because homeless people, I don't want to put a stigma on the homeless people in our town, but most of them that we talked with were homeless because they had a problem. But I'd be open, you know, to discuss... The rec center seems like a really central location, perhaps even an underutilized resource that we have, so, you know, it makes sense to be asked for that, but I'd be willing to discuss any other locations that you all might have.
What did you do in your sweater time?
I do a lot of things.
You're amazing.
Thank you.
Would you be adding to put this on the agenda and vote for it? I guess you'd have to get...
Well, the only...
Shoes would have.
Yeah.
You'd have to talk...
Shoes would have to...
I know that we've... Someone had spoke with shoes before.
Well, here's a problem we had, and it's just like me and Mr. Preston had a meeting with a guy the other day wanting to bring a certain type of business downtown.
Oh, I know about that.
Yeah.
Not into that.
The problem shoes had in the past was the clientele that it brought in. So, if we were going to give them a place to meet, then it's going to have to be, it's going to have to be policed quite well. And I'm not downgrading anybody by any means. I'm just saying that, you know, sometimes...
Things happen.
Yeah, you've got to be careful with how things go.
I personally have never experienced any... I go to meetings almost every day, and I've never been in a meeting where the police have had to come in.
Well...
But I understand the concern, of course. We also have a zero tolerance policy for violence.
Shoes may have, and that's the reason I'm saying you probably need to contact him first before we as a body can even...
I mean, and I would suggest like... I know that he had a negative experience over a day time ago with something that happened in the parking lot here.
I think the noon timeframe as like an opener in your argument for it would be, well, because where they do the after-school program here.
Yeah.
You know, from 3 until, what, 5:30?
That's what I was...
I think that right there would be the only, the only issue that I would see is parents not feeling comfortable. And I mean, I get that, you know? It's something that they're not familiar with, they don't understand, you know? But I think if you were to do maybe a noon type of approach, you know, it's...
Well, it's amazing how much this place is used, and people have not a clue how much this place is used.
It is, you're right.
I mean, we... It is absolutely a community center of fire and...
That's what it's for.
I mean, it really is.
Stuff like this is what it's for, too.
But with the meetings and stuff, like you said, like if people have a place to go, then the chances of them staying, getting clean, staying clean are a lot higher.
Yeah, and I love the...
Which would probably mean that ambulances would have to go out till I can overdose as often, right?
And I would welcome you all to look at that schedule and contact the people that do allow us to have meetings as well. Like I said, we abide by all rules that are laid out for us. We pay rent, we don't make mess, we even carry our own coffee pots around and totes to the last few years. We even carry our own coffee pots around in tote to the last huge year this evening.
If it's all right with council, and it's all with you, I'll meet with Shoes tomorrow, and we'll take a look at... If Shoes is fine with it, if it's okay with you all, I'm fine with it. But we've got to make sure that when these meetings take place.
We know we've got a horrible problem.
We lead it. There's no question.
And we need your help desperately, and I want it, and if they can work it out, I hope it works.
Yeah, I'm willing to answer any questions or be part of that meeting. Anything that might be thrown in, just let me know. You've got my number?
I got your number, babe.
Thank you.
I can get in touch with you.
Thank you for here, what you're doing.
And you got two beautiful children, by the way. I do know them.
All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I make one.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Uh-uh.
Opposed. We stand.